Okay.
Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so today's, uh... Wednesday, August 19th. The agenda for our meeting is as follows. 6:30 will be called to order in the minutes of July 15th, 2020. At 6:35, there'll be a public hearing for a special permit for 104 Westwood Drive for Stephen and Michelle Henigan. At 6:50, there'll be a determination at 1210... 1210 Tantascashe Shore Drive for Stephen Santangelo. 7 o'clock, a determination at 51 Village Road, Old Village Road for Brian Ungerer. 7:10, determination for 6 Fair Ground Road, property 1 LLC. At 7:20, a determination at 1 Hawthorne Road for Tim O'Brien. So that's the agenda, so we can start, I guess, with the minutes.
Liz, you need to read the statement on the bottom of the agenda? Yes, sorry.
That's right. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, section, uh... 38A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation can be found in the town's website. For this meeting, the members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting either online or via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428... for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. The phone number is only active for the public during the public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via tele... techno... technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite our best efforts, we will post audio and video recordings, transcripts, and other comprehensive rec... or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So the first thing would be the minutes from July 15th, 2020. So I was not here for that meeting, so I'm going to be abstaining from that vote. So if you all had a chance to read those minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Or are there any, um, changes or amendments to it?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of when, July 15th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a... Alvos in favor of accepting the minutes from July 15th, 2020. In the case by saying yes. So Diane?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I didn't hear you say Fidelis, but I'll say yes.
Tom?
Yes, I think Liz is walking up.
Okay, so then I'm abstaining.
Yes.
Fidelis votes yes.
Fidelis.
Um...
Yes.
So every... yeah, so it's passed. Um... Okay, so... There is... alright, now time for the public hearing. Uh, would someone like to read the, um... the hearing notice? Or am I the only one that has it?
I have it, Liz. I can read it if you'd like. In accordance with the provisions... Oops. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall in Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street on Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, at 6:35 PM on the application of Stephen and Michelle Henigan. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05, and Chapter 24, Section 24.09, subparagaphs A through E of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use for the property located at 104 Westwood Drive. The applicant is proposing to expand a rear upper deck from 10 foot by 16 feet to 12 feet by 37 feet, along with a proposed set of stairs and a 22-foot-by-5-foot walkway. The zoning board may elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case details respecting the same will be made public by the Zoning Board of Appeals in advance of the hearing and will be posted here. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The proposed request can be viewed at HTTPS slash slash www.sturbridge.gov/zoning-board-appeals-pageish recent filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508 or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the correspondence we see correspondence from Gene Rubon, uh, we see, uh, correspondence from the Board of Health, Conservation, Water Sewer, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and the Building Inspector. And that's it. So, um... Okay, um... Steve Henigan, would you like to go ahead and start and give us your presentation?
So Liz, we're just going to take a minute and put the plan up on the screen. And, um, then Mr. Henigan can explain his plan. So just give us a second. I'm going to let Janaye be the presenter.
Thank you.
Um, I... I... I should also read what the request is for. Um, they propose to expand the rear upper deck so that the deck will be 12 by 37... 12 feet by 37 feet. The current deck is 10 feet by 16 feet. They also propose a set of stairs and a 22-by-5 walkway. Okay.
Okay, so...
Mr. Henigan? Start.
Thank you. My name is Steve Henigan. I live at 104 Westwood Drive. Uh, the proposal, along with making the deck a little bigger, uh, it also will serve two purposes. It'll cover, on the bottom of the screen, it's not shown in the plans, but there's two very large concrete pores of cement, which were done to reinforce a crack in the foundation. It's all by the prior owner. That's a very good view of it right there. So the two things that the deck will accomplish is, one, it'll cover that ice store, but also there is no access off of the deck. So this would create a walkway to the deck and then have stairs off the deck as well, which, uh, will be much more user-friendly and also a safer environment.
We're just going to show the back of the house in a second here. There you go. There's the back deck that's existing.
So it would keep that same footprint. It wouldn't go any further to the right. It would keep that same footprint. It would just come all the way over to the left to where the foundation, the, uh, supports are.
I'm going to go back to the plan, Janaye.
It's a little wider than that, too, Steve, right?
Yes, it's currently 10 feet from the house, and we would like to go 12 feet from the house.
Okay.
Steve, on the drawing, there's... is there something else? Um, oh, you know what? I'm looking at just the front step. There's nothing being done with the front step, right?
That is correct. Nothing.
Okay. I'm sorry. I've just misinterpreted the color. Okay.
I have a couple of questions, and then, um... will let other people ask questions? Are those the stairs drawn in right there on the plan?
Yes, so they would be, um... Correct. That's right there. That is correct.
And those are new?
Yes, there are no stairs at the moment, but we'd like to include those as part of the project.
Okay, um... That walkway that you're talking about, it's not on the ground. It's up in the air.
That... that is correct. It would be elevated.
Show that picture again.
The height of the deck?
Yes, it would be flush with the deck.
Okay. Um... My other question is, going back to the other page, is it... is this two lots together? I see that dotted line.
I was told when we purchased it, it was referred to as a double lot. Most... my neighbors both have 50 feet of frontage, and I have 100 feet of frontage along the water.
Okay. Alright, um, any... does anyone... Marge, do you have any questions?
Uh... Actually, uh, no. Um... Actually, the only thing with the DPW comment was that, uh, you have to be careful not to install the posts near the sewer line. So have you taken that into consideration?
Yes, ma'am. The sewer... the sewer system with the, uh... that's covered with the green, um, manhole cover. It's in the front, uh, almost in the way of the driveway, but it's certainly far away from this project.
Okay, because it's hard to see. That's what I was...
Yes.
Okay, you're not be able to see it. Alright, but it's covered, so...
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only question that I really have. Everything else is pretty much exclusive that you showed, so... I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Do you have questions? Oh, no question. Fidelis?
Uh, yeah. First, my question. Just to understand a little bit more. So the... the... the deck, right, are you... it's going to... it's going to come from the back and then go through the side over the, uh, concrete, uh, dressing, um, or the foundation, right?
Yes, sir. Those, uh, actually, those braces are five feet wide. So a 5-foot walkway would cover it.
Okay, so is it... is it going to come all the way up to, you know, because I don't see it connected on the... on the plan, but, you know, is it... is it... is it going to come all the way to the front of the house?
It would come only far enough to, uh, put a step where the wall is. So it wouldn't... it would stop just prior to the garage, the front door of the garage.
Okay, so you'll be able to walk from the garage and then go right up and then go to the deck at the back, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, because I was looking at... looking at the plan. It doesn't quite show that, so that's why I was a little bit confused with, um, that was what you wanted to do.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. No further questions?
Thank you. Um, I do have one... what was the result of the conservation meeting?
It was approved.
I... I met...
Oh, sorry, Stephen. Go ahead.
I was just going to say the same as you, Gene. Thank you.
Is that approved on the 4th or something?
Yes, it did.
I believe. Uh, August 4th, yeah.
August 4th, yes.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, does anybody have any ques... any more questions on this project?
I'm good.
Alright, hold on. We've got to check the, uh... we have to check the call-in line for the abutters to see if any abutters called in.
Are there any abutters on the line that want to make any comments about the special permit for 104 Westwood Drive for Stephen and Michelle Henigan?
We're all set. There's no one on the line.
Okay, um... So we'll give a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Diane. Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, uh, of Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously, um... Did you want to make a motion, Diane?
I make a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to sign that the proposal by Stephen and Michelle Henigan to expand a rear upper deck from 10 feet by 16 feet to 12 feet by 36 feet with... with a proposed set of stairs and 25 feet, um, by 5 feet walkway will increase the ceiling floor coverage from 60 to 53 percent to 19.04 percent. This increase is non-conforming and will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because the applicant is closing an upper deck story and he does cap... and he does capture his roof runage infiltrate that... that... that back into the, um... into the groundwater, into the ground.
Is there a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Okay.
Was that Tom Earls? I'm sorry. Tom? Okay, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of, um... I'll start with, uh, Marge. If you're in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we need a... a motion. Second motion.
Okay. Alright, I'll make it. I make a motion to grant a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20.05 and Chapter 24.09, A to E of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure or uses for the property located at 104 Westwood Drive, to expand a rear deck from 10 feet to 16 feet... from 10 feet to 16 feet to 12 feet by 37 feet along... along with a... a whole set of stairs and a 22-by-5 feet walkway as shown on the plan entitled Mortgage Inspection Plan given to Henigan and Michelle M. Henigan, prepared by Lenny Moran and... Sivner? Sivner? Registered with their stated date of 8/1019. Page 45, page 57, slash 64, and, uh, plan book slash plan 25... no, 249 slash 67, job number 07-1784-19.
Second?
The second?
Five. I'll second.
Marge?
Okay. Uh... We have a motion and a second, and I'll go around again. I'll ask. If you are in favor, say yes. Uh, Fidelis?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Okay. We're all set.
You're good, Steve. Thank you very much, members of the board.
You're welcome.
You were locked.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Alright, the next, uh, hearing is a determination for Stephen Sant... yes, Tom Angelo on 1210 Tantascashe Shore Drive.
Stephen, okay.
Alright. Um, Stephen is on the meeting, and we just... Janaye just put his plan up for you.
Hi.
Remotion, yeah?
Wait a minute. And he's asking to... He's not on the apple... uh, on the apple.
Guys, I'm... I'm sorry. I'm having terrible connection issues tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, Stephen. That's actually better. So, um...
The applicant is asking the proposed project is to replace an existing cinder block... cinder block foundation and skirting foundation with poured concrete. The house will be elevated four feet in the process with a bulkhead added on the... added on the behind-the-scentories way of the house to access the crawl space. Um... We received information from Gene Rubon, the town planner, Department of Public Works, Conservation, Board of Health, the Fire Department, and the Building Inspector. Alright. Okay, um, Mr. Sant... Sant Angelo, uh, you can begin your proposal.
Sure, sure. Thank you so much. My last name's Sant Angelo. If you give me one second, I'll pull a screen up. I'm just trying to manage connections. I feel embarrassed. But hold on one second. Let me see if I can share a screen.
Don't be embarrassed. Actually, um, Stephen, we put the plan up for you.
Okay. That should do it. Can you hear me okay still?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so, um, this drawing was done by Jalbert. It was done two years ago to support a tight tank installation in the front of the house. I have a few other images to add some color if I could share my screen.
Sure.
There's the plan, okay? So, um, just while we're on this subject here, this plan is the outline of the house. Um, there's no intention of changing the footprint of the house. It's just simply a matter of elevating the house to remove the cinder blocks that are supporting it. Those are failing, coupled with the skirting on the outside, and add a proper foundation and support.
Okay. Alright, Stephen, hold on a second, and we'll let you share your screen.
Okay.
Um, Janaye, how do I switch you off?
Go there, yeah? And then find...
Find you.
I think if you just go to him.
Just go to Stephen?
Yeah.
Stephen, don't be embarrassed. We all have to figure this out.
No, I'm... I'm pretty tech savvy, but I... I took a trip to visit my parents, and my computer is not cooperating, so... best intentions.
There you go. You should be able to share your screen now.
Yep, I think it's happening. Alright. So... trying not to bore you with all my work stuff. Hopefully this pops up. Um... I think I can do this. Alright, so this is my house. It's 1210 Tantascashe Shore Drive. And what I want to point out here is how low the house is to the ground. So this... can you see my mouse moving on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this line is the... divide or meeting point between the pine sheeting on the outside and the skirting on the bottom. And as you walk around, this is the front door. Um, you have to walk down two steps to go up three steps. And again, this is somewhat of the issue I'm having. And here, you can see some rot, but these timbers kind of, uh, put the house in a hole, more or less. And so the... the project here is intended to elevate the house, make it a little bit more, um, uniform with the surrounding, um, areas, and then, um, a little bit more safe to come in and out. It's painful to have to walk down these steps and then go up. Now, that's aesthetics. I get it. But, um, you know, coupled with the fact that the cinder blocks supporting the house, which, um... it's not really... actually, in this picture right here, you see this little handle? That's a crawl space. That's the way I have to get into the crawl space of the house. It's extremely difficult to fit into, um, this little window here. So I've done it. Um, I would have taken some pictures of the cinder blocks, but I... I did not have it in me to get under there in the past couple of days. So hopefully forgive me for the lack of inside-out pictures. Um, so the bulk... bulkhead that we talked about here on the plan, this is the front porch, um, visible here. And then, when we talk about adding a bulkhead, it's simply on the backside of the front porch just to give me a little bit more reasonable access into the crawl space. Um, we talked about the plan already. This is the plan of the house left the deck. Um, and it's simply a... a elevation, like I said, and pouring a proper concrete foundation. This drawing was done by Russ Corvo. He's been contracted to do the foundation work. Um, and then, uh, I'm going to pause there and give you guys the opportunity to ask questions.
Alright, thank you. Um... Marge, do you have any questions?
It looks pretty clear cut to me. And, uh, I think if I owned the property, I would be on board to do the same thing. So, uh, it's a safety issue, too. So I reviewed it all, and I have no problem with it.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, I'm just wondering, could you pour a cellar floor in there? Or are you just not interested in that, or, um... is that possible?
It... that's a great question. Um, so water is somewhat unpredictable in this area. That's another, um, motivator for the change here. Um, when I bought this property back in October of 2017, I had six inches of water in the backyard, which basically filled the basement. So, you know, talking with the contractor, um, the recommendation is just a gravel foundation and then a, uh, area if I need to for some pump. But the idea is that if any water does get in, I'd be able to drain that. pump, but the idea is that if any water does get in, they'd be able to drain back out.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Diane?
No, no questions.
Fidella?
No questions.
Well, I don't have any questions either. So, someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Marge.
Okay, uh, I'll make the, uh, I'll make the motion to grant a determination to, to Stephen, uh, San Angelo for property located at twelve Tantascus Shore Drive to allow the replacement of a cinder block foundation, um, with a poured concrete, um, foundation. The house will thereby be elevated by four feet, and the addition of a bulkhead will allow access to crawl space, um, as shown on plan number one seven one eight nine, dated ten eighteen seventeen. No revision shown, um, prepared by Jalbert Engineering Inc., fifty-four Main Street. Approval is granted, as provided that all issues, concerns, and permits deemed necessary by various departments, boards, et cetera, be adhered to and in compliance prior to obstruction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second, so I will do the roll call again for votes. Uh, Fidella?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so it's unanimous. So...
Enjoy.
Yeah.
Is that it? I'm all set?
All set, Stephen.
Yeah.
Awesome. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Have a great night. It was great talking to you, great seeing you. Thanks again. Take care.
Enjoy it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
So, the next determination is fifty-one Old Village Road, Brian Unger.
You're doing this?
Again, if you want.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Brian?
No, he did ask, yeah.
Brian, are you, you want me to allow you to share your screen?
Actually, I'm on my iPad. My computer, um, iPhone's not working.
Okay, I'll have Janay put it up. Sure.
Thank, thank you very much.
All right, so, the application is to, um, make a new garage. Uh, the, the site is cleared, and they're gonna, and the existing driveway will be used. We received information from, uh, Jean Rubam, the town planner, Conservation, Board of Health, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and the Building Department. So, okay, Mr. Unger, you can make your presentation.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, um, we've lived here for approximately twenty-three years, and I have a two-car garage that's under my home, and it's simply not tall enough to put a couple of my vehicles in. So, we've decided, we have another lot behind us, but several are probably familiar, and that was a much di- more difficult process. So, when I came and spoke with Jean, they recommended I look at the front yard. We have the area. Um, it's nice and level. Comes out from existing driveway. I'm gonna move the existing shed out of there, and I'm well under the percentage. So, my goal is just simply to build a garage to get the extra vehicles I have, um, inside, so I and everyone else doesn't have to look at them on a daily basis.
Um, all right, so I'll, I'll start with, uh, Diane. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Tom?
No, I spoke with the, uh, owner this afternoon, and I'm fine. He's do, good job.
Thanks. Uh, Fidella?
No question.
Marge?
Uh, just a couple. Uh, on shed number two, that's gonna be relocated, according to the plan.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what, what we're gonna actually do with it. If we're gonna, uh, move it to a neighbor's house, or what we're gonna do with it yet. It was built by the school, um, a number of years ago, and I shed, I'm not sure. It won't be anywhere near where, in the front yard or anywhere if I, I don't know what I'd even do with it. Haven't decided currently.
On the shed, uh, number one?
Yes.
How many feet is that from the setback?
Um, I, I, I don't know how far we feed it from the setback, only because I don't, when they drew this plan, they, they moved the, the foot back, but I know when it, when Jalbert was here, he said that I was well within the, uh, within the...
Okay, it looks like you are, just on the basis of looking at that forty-four point four-six feet on the...
Yeah.
Distance. All right, I just wanted to make sure we're dead. Okay, uh, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't have any questions either, um, but I thank you for having such a detailed plan. That's very helpful. Okay, oh, Eddie, did you, do we have to check with the Butters, Jean?
Um, it's a determination, but we will check, just to make sure.
Over.
Are there any Butters on the line who would like to make a comment on the determination for fifty-one Old Village Road?
No, there's no one on the line.
Okay, um, would someone want to make a, um...
I'll make it.
Motion.
A motion to grant the determination to Brian Unger for the property at fifty-one Old Village Road to construct a three-car garage, will not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformities, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the desired activities as shown on the plan entitled "Supposed Garage by Plan" for Brian E. and Margaret and M. Unger, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, and dated seven nine twenty, D W G number two zero zero seven zero.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. So, I will take the roll call. Um, Tom, I'll start with you this time.
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Fidella?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I am also saying yes, so it's unanimous. The motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for, for all your help. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good luck.
That's, I'm sure I'll be seeing you soon, and have a wonderful evening.
You, too.
You, too.
You, too.
Right.
Okay, the next is Six Fairgrounds Road, Property One LLC.
Yeah, so Sharon Riley is on the, is on the call, and we will put up her plan for her.
Thanks, Jean.
You're welcome.
So, what we would like to do is, uh, build this ten-by-twenty-two-foot deck off the back of the house. Uh, there was a, a dilapidated older deck that was a little smaller, um, but we did receive a building permit to put a sliding glass door off the, um, where you see in this photo on the right side, where that window is existing, uh, we have a sliding glass door, and would like to extend the deck out from that window to the, uh, left side of the photo as you see it. Um, and it, it does run ninety-two feet from the water. Um, the Conservation Office, we had, um, on-site, and they have no objections to the project.
Okay, I'll, um, we did receive information from the town planner, Jean Rubam, the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, um, Building Inspector, the Conservation, and the Conservation Commission. Um, you say you already had that, um, Conservation meeting?
I did, uh, last night, Jean.
It split, but that's all right. So, it, was it all set? If that, are they, did they have any restrictions or anything?
Uh, no.
All right, um, questions? I'll start with Diane. Do you have any questions?
I, I have no questions.
Fidella?
No question.
Tom?
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
Marge? Thank you, Marge.
No, that was pretty straightforward.
All right, and, um, I don't have any questions either, so we'll take a motion. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll do it. Unless somebody else wants to, I'll refer to anybody.
Go ahead, Marge.
Go ahead, Marge. Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to grant a determination to Property One, Limited Liability Company, for property located at Six Fairgrounds Road, um, to construct a new deck to replace the smaller rear deck on the home, uh, which will not encroach any further than the existing home, and the applicant will also install a fence on the south side. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm, I'm asking the applicant.
Yes.
Uh, yes, all right. Um, uh, the proposal, uh, does not intensify or create additional nonconformities. Approval is granted, provided that all issues, concerns, permits deemed necessary by various boards, et cetera, be adhered to and in compliance. Okay?
Second?
Diane?
I second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll start, uh, Tom?
Yes.
Fidella?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so it is unanimous. The motion passes. The determination is granted. Thank you very much.
Oh, I, excuse me, can I just amend it a little? I, the motion stands, but as shown on a hand-drawn plan, okay? That's all I wanted to add, as amended.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
All right.
You're good.
Sharon, you're all set. We'll give a copy to the Building Inspector tomorrow.
Wait, thank you, thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
You're welcome. Okay, our final, uh, determination for the night is on Monha, Ha Haun Road for Tim O'Brien. We received information from Jean, so the, uh, planning chair, uh, the town planner, um, Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Building Inspector. Uh, so, the determination is asking to add a fourteen-by-thirty garage to the right side of the existing garage. So, Mr. O'Brien, you may go ahead and make your presentation.
So, on the right side of my, my existing garage, I'm looking to put a, uh, a driveway in that would be thirty, a gravel driveway would be about thirty-five feet from the garage. The garage would be about thirty-five feet back from the street, uh, fifteen feet from, uh, the right side setback, and about forty-five feet from the rear setback. Um, it would not be, it would not have a foundation. It's basically a, uh, a shed tiled garage that comes pre-built from, from quarter farms. That, that picture right there is the exact, uh, the exact style that I'm, I'm looking to put up. It has a wooden floor.
Okay, um, we have questions. Diane, do you have any questions, Diane?
No, I have no questions. I took a garage.
Fidella?
No questions.
Tom?
Uh, Tim, if you could, if you can find the window, put it in the back, uh, make the back of it look a little more like a, a house or, as opposed to a garage, but that's my only request. I'm fine with the whole thing. Okay, thank you.
Oh, well, may I say something?
Yes.
No, Jean?
Yes, uh, Tom, you should, uh, recuse yourself, uh, mention that you're recusing yourself, and then ask your question as, as an Butter.
I really don't think you, you don't do an engineering on projects either. That's my take from what I learned in the past.
Then I'll abstain from any further discussion.
Okay, Marge, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine, thank you. Uh, except, uh, I, I don't see in the application where the gravel road was, uh, mentioned.
Uh, it's not, you know what, it's not written in the application, and it's, it's just on the, uh, on the plot plan, uh, Jalbert Engineering. So, I see it on the, uh, on the, uh, as well.
All right. Fidella, did I ask you already if you had questions?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so, so, I just, are you finished, Marge? I'm sorry, Marge, were you finished?
I had another question.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, you, you have an existing garage already?
I do, yes.
Yeah, is, is that the, the one that doesn't say anything next to the existing paved driveway?
Yes.
Two-point-six-nine setback?
Correct.
Is that where the, the other garage is? But you have another garage?
Yeah, that, that is, that is the existing garage, yes.
All right, so we're putting in another, a, a second garage?
Correct.
Okay. No, I didn't, it, it didn't say what it is. It was very easy for me to see that it was a house, but I didn't see where the garage was.
Yes, it, it, correct.
Okay, thank you. Answered my question.
All right, so my question, I just have one. So, you're gonna make a driveway that's gonna lead to the new garage?
Correct.
Okay, um...
Driveway would be about nine, probably about nine feet wide, not quite the full fourteen feet of the garage.
All right, that was my only question. So, do we have, someone want to make a motion for the determination?
I'll make a motion. Grant the determination to Tim O'Brien for property located at one seven one road to construct a fourteen-feet-by-thirty-feet garage to the right of the existing garage. The garage will not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformities. Owner may apply... may apply for building permit for described activities as shown on the plan entitled, proposed by Tim O'Brien, prepared by Javert Engineering, Plan Date 7/27/20, D W G number 20083.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second it.
Marge?
Do we have a motion in a second, and I will call the roll. Fidella?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So, do we, do we have enough, it's the majority of present, or?
Yes.
Right, it's the majority.
Four, four is sufficient, yep.
All right. I'm sorry.
All right. So, the determination passes?
Yes.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
Good luck.
I'll talk to you again when it's legal.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply to put up a wind turbine next time. Thank you, have a good night.
You, too.
You, too, Tim.
All right, uh, we have any old business? I don't see any, how about new business?
I'm curious about the recusal, um, because I don't have any financial interest in the project, the only interest I might have is to go negative because it's so close to my house or whatever, but I'm wondering about that recusal necessity.
Um, it's, it may not be legally a necessity, but it's always good practice when you're a direct abutter to recuse yourself from the discussion, so. You could contact the State Ethics Commission if, you know, if you wanted an actual ruling on that, but that's always been my practice, to advise board members not to act on direct abutters' applications. And you may not have a financial...
We were short a member, you would have needed my vote.
Right.
So, that's...
Right, and then would have had you make a state, probably just make a statement to that effect, that you were a direct abutter, and that you had, you know, no...
Under the Mullen rule, then, my team?
No, not under the, no, not under the Mullen rule, he would have just had to have made a statement that, you know, he was a direct abutter, but that he had no financial interest or conflict with it. And then, if, you're right, Tom, if we only had the four of you, then I would have you make that statement, so.
I'm good, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Tom, but I always stick to the, what I was taught in past experiences.
Oh, and you were saying, Marge, excuse me? What were you saying exactly?
No, I just said that for, all the years I was on, I, it was always suggested, because of the perception, that you should...
Right.
...recuse yourself.
Okay.
I mean, even though, you know, not that anybody has any, you know, bad intent or anything, it's just the perception, in case anybody has an objection or files an appeal of it.
Okay.
Right, that you were, like, you know, doing a favor for a neighbor or something like that, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And to protect you as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any more new business? No? No, hey? Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
The most.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Do we, do we have a second? All right, all votes in favor. Fidella?
Uh, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so meeting is adjourned.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Next one.
Night.
Good night.
See you, everyone.
Bye, everybody.